Okay, all right. Okay, welcome everyone. Thanks for coming out on what might be a pretty blessery night. I'm going to call to order the Los Olivos Community Services District Regular Meeting for February 12 at 6:02 PM. Roll call.
President Kennedy.
Here.
Vice President Palmer.
Here.
Director Fayram.
Yep.
Director Parks.
Here.
Director Nelson.
Here.
I'll note, just for the record, that we have our new district council, Martin, and I'm going to butcher his last name, called Zanovich.
You did a good job. Nice to meet everybody.
Is on soon.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, if everybody can stand, we'll do Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Item on the agenda, public comment. If there is anyone either online or in the room that would like to address the board about something not on tonight's agenda, this is your big moment. No one in the room? Anyone online, Guy?
I see no hands raised online.
Okay, then we shall move on to the General Manager's District Status Report.
Yeah, so for those who haven't attended our meetings in a regular sort of way or recently, I give a very, very brief summary of the major things that are going on at this point. About the only thing we have going on that's not already on tonight's agenda is the STANTEC engineering design and cost estimate. At this point, I'd just say they appear to be on track to deliver sometime next month, which would mean we can get it on the April agenda.
Great. Okay, so can we do public comment on this one? Okay, so this information. All right, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda.
If I may, Madam President, so this is a larger-than-usual consent agenda, particularly when it comes to invoices. Normally, we would have had a meeting in January, right? And that would have been approved then. This month's agenda also includes a little bit of a twist. Inasmuch as the Finance Subcommittee would normally review all of the invoices before this meeting, invoices seven through 13 were on last Friday's agenda. That meeting was not held due to a lack of a quorum. So while the individual members of the Subcommittee may have looked at them, may have reviewed them, there's no recommendation specifically for those items at this time.
Can I just add, I did review all of the invoices that are slated for payment and did not see anything that was questionable. Okay, so, I'm sorry. Open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to address the board? Okay, none? How about online? Any?
See, no hands raised online.
All right, then if we can get a motion.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, we have had a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is the Brown Act, Key Points for the Public, the Board, and Staff.
Yeah, so if I may, I'll just again reintroduce our new council, Martin. I'll note that if you're having trouble seeing the slides as we present them, if you're out there in Internet land, they are on the website, or should be on the website. And so with that, I just turn it over to Martin, and I'll be happy to be his speaker. I'll be presenting it from here, so if you're not doing it remote, so just.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Guy. I can't see the screen, so we're just going to roll through it, but let me take just a minute to tell you that I'm very pleased to be able to be your legal advisor and be able to provide and work with Guy on moving forward with the district. I've been a lawyer since '87. I've been a governmental agency lawyer since 1990. Served many water districts and many cities in California over the last 37 years, and I look forward to working with everybody in the district. So thank you. This is very brief, we're just going to go through. Oh, there we go. Excellent, thank you. Now I can see the screen. Let's go on to the first page, please. So as, I'm sure everybody is already aware, Ralph and Brown Act was put into place in order to prevent backdoor dealings and basically corruption. The interesting part of the wisdom of the state legislature, when they enacted the Brown Act in order to curb corruption and backdoor dealing, they specifically excluded themselves from the provisions of the Brown Act. So it does not apply to the state legislature, but it does apply to all the local agencies, cities, districts, counties, et cetera. Next slide, please. The Brown Act basically provides that any business that is done by a public agency, the district in this particular sense, has to be done in an open meeting. It has to be in the sunshine of public view. Public needs to be able to see the decisions being made, and it needs to be properly agendized with proper notice to the public. What that means in reverse is that outside of an open, publicly noticed meeting, majority or quorum of the legislative body of the board may not meet and consult or discuss district business. There are a few exceptions, which we'll go through briefly, but it is important that a quorum, in this instance, is three of you, that the three of you realize that you, outside of a properly noticed meeting, can't meet and discuss business. Next slide, please. So what is a meeting? What constitutes a meeting? Well, meeting, again, gathering of a majority of members of legislature to hear, discuss, or deliberate any item which is within its subject matter jurisdiction. So if the three of you meet in a local pub and start talking about district business, that would be an illegal meeting unless that meeting was publicly noticed 24 hours or 72 hours before it happened, and public had access to sit there and listen to you discuss whatever it is that you're discussing. Next slide, please. Means of communication, what does it include? Any use of direct or indirect communication will constitute a meeting. It just, it can be, as we'll see on the next slides, it could be direct among each other, it could be through a serial meeting, it could be through intermediary. Next slide, please. Meeting, again, takes place when a quorum receives information or discusses, deliberates any item. It has to happen within the boundary, in order to be legal meeting, has to happen with the boundary of the district, and then you can call a special meeting. Serial and rotating meetings and polling, which we'll discuss in a minute, is prohibited. Social gatherings, the three or the five of you can gather together for somebody's birthday or other occasion, or even for a ribbon cutting on any project the district is cutting. That does not constitute a meeting. Next slide, please. All right, serial meetings, this is where we get into the meat of it. There are chain serial meetings and hub-and-spoke serial meetings. A chain serial meeting happens when one of you discusses or provides information to another director, and then that director discusses and provides information to the next director. And I apologize for the city reference there, I could not, somehow I couldn't get that edited, but this was also used for council members, so I apologize for that. But it's basically, any time the information is transferred among or between the quorum of the board, that constitutes a meeting. Again, it could be a hub-and-spoke, when one of you follows the information to others. There's also other ways that a hub-and-spoke meeting can occur. You can be approached by a member of public, and that member of the public will talk to you about a matter related to the district, whether it's an expenditure, or a project, or whatever else is on their mind, and you can be assured that they also talk to other board members, other directors, about the same thing. And before you know it, through that member of the public, the three of you are now gathering concurrence, and that member of the public is basically becomes a hub for what could potentially be deemed an illegal meeting. So you do need to, I'm not recommending or telling you that you should not talk to the public when you're approached by members of the public, but you should keep all of that in mind, and that it is possible that, especially on some items that are very, very contentious or of great significance, that a serial meeting could occur. Let's move on to the next slide, please. In 2020, there were some changes in the legislature which goes to your communications online, basically on the Internet. My advice to legislative members of the legislature, the directors or city council members, is that if you're going to have a presence as a director on the Internet, that you have a separate account for that purpose. In other words, you can have a Facebook account, let's say, or Instagram, or whatever the other platforms are, that is strictly related to your district business. And that account, you can interact with the members of the public, but you are basically precluded from unfriending or blocking others. On your personal account, you can avoid that issue if you keep all the business matters off of your account. There is a case out there where a supervisor, from Board of Supervisors, unfriended or blocked a constituent from her Facebook account for 16 minutes, and she was sued by that person, and he prevailed in court because the court said that she was using her Facebook as a public medium and public expression, and she was precluded from blocking or unfriending any people that were participating in that. Also, be aware of reply to all or chain emails where all of a sudden, the majority of you or all of you are on a chain of emails that is exchanging information, and which becomes then a serial meeting. Next slide, please. There are some things that are not a meeting. You obviously can have individual contacts among yourselves. Please be aware that if you do speak to one director about matters of jurisdictional importance for the district, you're precluded from speaking to any other director about the same matter. The law does provide that myself, or the General Manager, or any staff member can meet with each of you and discuss the agenda, discuss any item that relates to your function as a director for the district. Our responsibility is to make sure that we don't transfer that conversation to the next director that we meet with. In other words, we create an ethical wall. We can talk to you and answer your questions and even get your opinion on an upcoming item, but we cannot then relay that to the next director that we talk with. So individual contacts are meetings, public conferences obviously are not meetings. Other local agency meetings, if you're attending meetings, City Council on Solvang or some other agency, that is not a meeting of the Board of Directors. Any community gatherings, and obviously, social gatherings. Next slide, please. Written agendas must be prepared and posted for each meeting, and the importance of that is that you can only take action and discuss items that have been agendized, so the public has notice of that discussion. That becomes significant mostly in public comment periods. If, that's where most of the time I've seen legislative bodies get too close to the line, is when a public comment is initiated and then all of a sudden breaks into a discussion, and then before you know it, you're talking about something that was not on the agenda. It may be significant, it may be very important, but unfortunately, you're precluded from discussing that. There's a case out there, I believe from Thousand Oaks, which found that a six-minute discussion in public comment about an item not on the agenda was permissible. They denied a Brown Act violation claim by one of the members of the public. But we don't know what the limit is, but we certainly don't want to test it. Next slide, please. Basically, what I said, everything that needs to be transacted needs to be agendized. You need to allow reasonable time for public comment on any action item. You're not obligated to open it for public comment on informational items, but you may do so if the chair, the president of the board decides to do that. There are ways of adding new items on the agenda. If there is an emergency, an urgent situation, if we ever get to that, we'll cover in greater detail. Next slide, please. Public participation in the meetings. Meetings obviously have to be open to the public, they have to be accessible. Speakers that address you in public comment, whether it's on the agenda or off the agenda, are not required to provide their name. Public may record or videotape the meeting as long as that action is not disruptive to the conduct of the meeting. In other words, you can't have somebody running around with a camera and sticking it in your face as if they're staying in one place and videotaping or taping it. That cannot be precluded. Again, the president of the board has the ability to stop the meeting if a member of the public or participation in the public comment becomes disruptive or basically becomes impossible to conduct the meeting. You may not do so simply because somebody is calling you names or accusing you of misconduct, as long as they do it orderly. Unfortunately, you need to sit there and take it. Next slide, please. Failure to comply with the Brown Act provisions results in do-overs. If a decision was made or action was taken in violation of Brown Act, and a request is filed for correction or remedy, you have to do that item over, you have to correct it. If you don't, then attorney's fees and other penalties are available, including basically nullifying whatever action was taken. Intentional violations are punishable by, you know, criminal penalties, but that's nothing to worry about. I'm sure that nothing like that will be of issue here. Next slide with that. Thank you for your attention on this, and with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Okay, well, we'll let the board ask any questions first, and then we'll open up for public comment. Okay, board members, any questions?
I do have one question. Is there anything new since that 2020 on the social media that we should be aware of? 2025?
I am not aware of anything new on social media since that law was passed. There's some, there's a bill pending that would extend the ability to Zoom in on meetings for a board member, because that, I think, is about to expire in July, I believe, or end of June. So there's a new bill that is pending to extend it. But as far as your presence on social media and being involved in that, I'm not aware of anything new since 2020.
I was referring, I didn't, I meant just since the 2020 social media decision, if there's, so you commented on the Zoom extension. There's nothing else pertaining to public conduct or public meetings for board members?
Nothing.
Since 2020. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Director Parks, or Fayram? Okay. Thank you very much, much appreciated and always helpful to get the reminder for sure about what is Brown Act. Well, let's open it up for public comment. Anybody in the room? Nope? Okay. Anyone online?
None.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you very much and welcome. We're very excited to have you on as our legal counsel. Thank you.
Chair, I mean, I just want to thank Martin for doing this. You know, it was only a year ago we did one of these.
Yes.
But we're headed into a period where the board's going to be making some decisions, presumably, and so that's the importance of doing this right now, and for not just the board, but the public as well.
Right, thank you, thank you, Guy. Okay, next item on the agenda is financial, the consideration of fiscal year 2023/24 financial audit.
Yeah, so we have been waiting for this audit for a little while now. Happily, we have it now. Much like the prior items and the invoices, that was to be reviewed by the Financial Subcommittee, which didn't need to, in all lack of majority. I have looked through it, I know that President Kennedy's looked through it individually. Looks fairly straightforward and clean. I didn't have any questions about it, unlike last year's, I had a number of questions and got those all sorted. So it's presented here without any recommendation from the Finance Subcommittee. Before we leave this item, I would also add that, recall that this is our last year to use MLH as a firm. I've already begun some outreach to identify a firm, because ideally, we'd be doing this a little closer to the end of the year. MLH got backed up, and we didn't see it till February, right? But ideally, we would see these in like October of each year, so shortly after the fiscal year ends, in June 30th, we'd get it off to an auditor, and we'd get it back. So I have started that outreach already.
Great, thank you very much. We'll open up to the board first, and then we'll take public comment, if that's okay with everyone. All right, so any board members with questions? Comments?
Did you review it?
I did.
And it was clean?
It was, actually, yes, and there was no substantial findings, which is great. That's always a...
That was my read. Okay.
Yes, yeah, it looked, it looked, it looked good. You normally always have some substantial finding, and we had none, so that was terrific. Director Parks, any questions?
Yeah, no, I looked through it, and I really know what I'm looking at, but it sure didn't seem like there was any red flags. I'm not experienced in looking at audits, but yes, I just sure didn't see anything or any comments. It seemed alarming.
Thank you. Director Fayram, anything?
No, just maybe one comment for our general manager. When we select a new auditor, you know, on something like this, a very upfront executive summary maybe would be nice, just this is what this report says, would be nice.
Okay, that's good to know for the next round. All right, if there are any other questions, no other questions or comments, we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the room want to talk about audit? How about online?
No requests to speak online.
Okay, hearing none, then we shall, would somebody like to, is this for, let's see, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, so I, at the end of the item itself, it's suggested, you know, with my recommendation, you can almost always turn those into a motion. Part of what we need to do is make sure it gets signed and submitted to the appropriate state agency, so the motion maker, whoever that might be, could include that, that would be tough.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the FY 2023/24 audit and direct the president and our general manager to sign and file as required. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Did you get both of those? Okay. We can just do a vote on this one, I believe, right? Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, passes. Again, thank you very much, Guy, and thank you also for starting the work on finding a new auditor. I know this can probably be a little bit of a challenge. Okay, next item on the agenda is number nine, planning for the decision-making related to wastewater treatment solutions.
Yeah, if I may, so there's a somewhat lengthy background in this attached to this agenda item, just to kind of set the stage, because again, I recognize that not everyone attends every meeting, not everyone attends every other meeting, other than the board and myself, so I wanted to provide a sufficient amount of background, just to say, hey, look, we're beginning to gather up, I think, all of the pieces that are needed to make decisions in at least a few areas, right? We're not going to make final decisions on everything, but I think we can begin to make decisions about what kind of collection approach do we want to take? Do we want to use affluent or gravity? Do we want to use next, right? We can begin getting enough information until we can make those sorts of decisions. Similarly, hopefully in April, we will have all the information effectively that we need from the City of Solvang from an engineering perspective, meaning what would it take to get a line from here to Solvang, right? There's some other information that I think we need from the City of Solvang, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. But what I'm trying to do with this item really is, for the public and the board, I want to understand from you, what is it that you need to at least make that preliminary decision? Because I think we've studied things sufficiently at this point, and it's probably time for us to begin taking that, those 30% designs and looking at a further design of something, but we're not going to 60, or 80, or 90% design all this stuff, right? We're going to pick a direction, we're going to work on that design. That same design kind of approach will be the one that we start in EIR with, Environmental Impact Review. So, you know, we can begin those two processes with this next step that presumably, after we have a public workshop, right, sometime in April, May, maybe June, the board can then make a decision and say, okay, this is where we want to go, right? Guys, start working on the RFP, or whatever we need to do to get the next level of engineering done, start talking a little bit more to Padres, since we've said they would be our environmental impact writing company. By the way, I have spoken to them recently, just to give them an update, an update where we're at. They'll want to update their phone to us, because that's now almost two years old. But again, this is really just what I wanted to do, and I've got a spreadsheet I'm going to bring up to maybe help sort of classify, categorize things for you. But really, what I'm trying to do here is say to you, board in particular, and the public, okay, what do you need to make a decision that this engineer pick it, I can go out and get, right? If it's opinions, well, that's not as concrete, right? I'm looking for things that are concrete, and hopefully, the example I'm going to bring up here in just a minute, in this spreadsheet, will kind of get us there. If you said to me, Guy, I want to know something that I think is kind of nebulous, please don't take it personally if I say, well, what's that mean? You know, how would I provide that to you, you know? So I really want to drive to things that, you know, between myself, engineering firms, just engineer pipe, we can go out and get, if it's a number, or, you know, some comparisons or what have you, I can do that sort of thing, right? And my goal here is to take us out of this sort of serial approach to things, you know, get this piece of data, oh, and then go get the next one, oh, and then go get the next one. Instead, there's a number of things I think we can be looking at at the same time, particularly sort of behind the scenes, to gather things like, what are ONUKOS, or what have you, so that we can get to a meeting in, I'll call it May, with the public, and say, here's all this information, people, what do you think? And hopefully, come out of that with enough to build a decision. I know I'm rambling a little bit there, but wanted to come at it a couple of different ways, just to make sure, that's what I'm looking for. What are those tangible things that we can go out and get to try and help you make a decision? So with that, I'm going to share my screen, back to that screen. So this is just an outline, so don't take it as any sort of gospel or anything like that. What I was trying to do is just put my own thoughts together in some fashion, right? So what I've got going across the top here are kind of a category of things, so category, collection, right? A subcategory of collection is gravity fed, affluent, some of the collection, like getting it, the middle miles, I've been calling it, from the bottom of the district down to Sunfield Park. If we start talking about a local solution, you know, and we said, oh, we might look at Dunn, and we've had some conversations with Dunn in the past, because they had a little space, what's that middle miles look like? So that's a subcategory. And then, you know, there's some info that might still be needed. In some cases, I just say, yes, we still need that info, right? Like, the middle miles from here to Solvang, we still need that. So that's why, for instance, this is a yes. Who's responsible for getting that, right? So in this case, I'm saying STANTEC, because we've paid them to put together a report. So in this case, I'm saying Stan Tech because we've paid them to put together a report. So that's on the capital side, and then it's an O and M and capital discussion often, right? But there may be other categories going out toward the right here that I haven't included. So I'm totally willing to do that if you've got some other, you know, if you said to me, here's an example that I that I think could potentially come up because, you know, what about the risk of that thing? You know, is is risk and how do you quantify risk? So risk is a is an interesting one, right? Remember, I said, if you tell me, what's the risk of that guy? I'm going to say, well, how can I give you information or what information can I give you around risk for that subcategory that'll help you get to the decision? Does that make sense? So again, I was just kind of working on this. So what I've done, that's the kind of going across the top there. Going down the side here, collection, right? Because we always, we've talked a lot about collection, we had a workshop on collection. And as part of collection, I threw in some of these middle mile pieces, right? Because we're not to a plant yet, we're still collecting, getting it to a plant. And then treatment, right? There's some things that we need to know about the city of solving. There's some things we need to know and talk about if it's a local solution. This is just some of them. We can add as many rows or sub rows to this thing as you want. Disposal, remember, every system is kind of collect, treat and dispose, right? No matter what you do, you're going to collect, treat and dispose. In the case of solving, well, disposal is already defined. As far as local disposal, I think we have pretty much everything. If we wanted to go down the path of percolation chambers, we've got all the the data, we've got a size. So this isn't necessarily trying to identify and document, but maybe it should be everything we already have. It's more, what are the things we still need, right? Permitting, to me, I got into this this whole thought process about permitting, you know, when you get into the operations and maintenance of things, one of the things I wanted to start thinking through is, well, we're going to have permits. I don't know what they're going to look like because it'll depend on the solutions we need, right? If we start talking about effluent collection, permitting is a little different than if we use gravity fed. When we talk about even just the collection, there's some permits we're going to have. So that, you know, I was just starting to kind of wrap my brain around, okay, here's another sort of moving piece. And then I had this others category. You know, obviously, part of what I'm trying to help us do here is get to a a direction particularly related to collection, treatment and disposal. And once we've got that direction, you know, we're going to start working on some documents and EIR and further engineering, right? All of that eventually is leading toward a property owner vote, Proposition 218, right? So, you know, I know that we're going to want to be able to do some polling of the community to make sure when we get to Prop 218, you know, you poll to make sure you're going down the right path and that whatever you put forward is going to be successful, you do that through polling. We do have to revisit the assessment in the engineers report. So one of the questions until we get to that assessment engineers report, along with probably at least a 60% design, hopefully more like an 80% design, is because you need numbers, right? And then you need a way to break those numbers up based on the parcels and the property owners and the the way things are zoned and however else we're going to do that. But we'll need an assessment engineers report to be able to break it down to, yeah, we like, you know, a mix of effluent and gravity, and we like going to solving, but what's it going to mean to me individually? Well, we're not going to be able to give you that number until we get further down the line with engineering and we have an assessment engineers report. Because the assessment engineer is the person that has to certify that. They have to do that. Another thing that I was thinking through was we're going to have to have a rate study, right? At some point, when you get to, you know, we kind of got the two pieces. You've got capital piece, right, for the construction of whatever we construct. And then we've got the operations and maintenance. We've got to think through how we're going to do rates and have a rate study based on that, based on our flows and how many people are connected and all of those moving pieces. So again, those last three are probably not ones that we're going to have by, in fact, I can assure you, we're not going to have those three done by May, but they're just, I'm trying to think a little bit ahead as well. So you may come up with some ideas that you say, hey, you know, I really want to know about something that I put in this other category, just to say, yeah, that's probably not something we need to make decision between effluent and gravity and mix or whatever. But it is a decision point that we're going to have somewhere in the future. So President Kennedy, I don't know how you would like to do this. I mean, we can just kind of have a free for all, maybe you go through. I can explain some more if there's other things that people have questions on. I could put this away and we can just do it verbally and I'll I'll take notes. I was just trying to give a context, so.
Well, I think it might be helpful for the board to have this discussion first and with you, and then we'll open it up for public comment if that's suitable for everyone. But I think it's important that we, it's important that we are going to use this time to give guys in the really specific direction that each of us would need in order to make a decision down the road here on behalf of the community. So
I could, you know, we could start with just one category like collection and put things in buckets that way. Or, you know, you could start at the end of the table with Tom and he could give you his list down the left, however you want to do it, it's up to you, Madam President.
Well, we could, we could break it up into collection, treatment, disposal and and see, start there and see what are the things that if in any of the board members need to know in those three areas. We can then break it down further if need be, if it's apparent that we need to go a little deeper into some aspect of any of these. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Is there anyone that would like to lead off?
You just assume that I want to?
No, no. Because if not, I've got like, I got a laundry list, I'll go.
No, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Thanks, thank you.
Well, you know, I think we've gotten a lot of information over the years and a lot of things have changed since we first met back in 2018. And a lot of the assumptions that we made, you know, no longer are applicable. And so we've come a long way, we have a lot of, lot of information. I know as we as we come to the end, we're never going to have all of the information. And I guarantee you, the cost estimates that we have will not be the final price. And so we have to recognize that, but it's 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 put in relative, just to view it in relation to each other. I think one, one item that would be good that Mr. Savage talked about is is risk, because on all of these, there's, there's a risk factor. Certainly, there's a different risk between a local plant or going to solving. We've seen the, you know, the, some of the troubles that even local Maddies and Dunn have had with, you know, with the regional board on their permit, because when the regional board gives you a permit, it's not an A for effort, you have to deliver. And so, you know, the risk of fines and whatnot are there. Risk of spills, which goes with all of, all of the options that they have. And then also, you know, like the operational risk, which goes back to that, to that permitting. That's subjective and probably in the eye of the beholder. I know I have my, my, my views on what some of those, those risks would be for each. So I think I guess in summary, without maybe putting as much detail as maybe you have in, you know, we've got a lot of information and we're heading towards a decision that we need to make this year soon, because then we have to get to the point where this is the project and then we can start doing qualified. We, I fear we have to stop the the cycle of never enough information and we need, we need to move forward. So I think the information that Guy has pulled together and put in one place, a lot of it is going to be looked at, well, what's the cost? A lot of it's going to be public preference on what, we've had some of those workshops and we need another one on that as well. And then I think we can get to the point where we can make a decision.
So I could, Tom, so you mentioned spills as a risk. Is that across all of these in your mind? It's kind of a, you know?
Well, so actually, well, thank you for for that. A collection system has the risk of a spill as does a transmission system and as does a plant. They have a risk of a spill, so. The point being that none of the options are without risks. If it were, that would make things a lot easier. But then also, maybe more so on the on the treatment side, you know, there's, there's risk of having a plant operating yourself and having, having to meet those criteria. And then there's a level of risk of having someone else who's already doing it and has a permit to to do that. So I think you can maybe objectively kind of rate those, you know, that way. You know, probably in the collection, transmission, it's maybe a push, except for the solving option has a long throw to it than a local. So if that answers your question.
So if I were to 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 deliver something to you, what would that look like? What would you want? I mean, I could presumably find some statistics on, you know, the kind of plant that solving has versus the kind of plant that Colcina Woodville, who went with them. So you kind of, there'd be a number of, you know, percentage or something per hour or, I'm sure I can find some number if that's what you're looking for. Is it just, you just want to recognize that, yeah, you others are out here.
I think it would be hard to, you know, say, well, we have a 15.7% higher risk doing this than that. I don't know that that we have that ability. But I think there is a subjective view, like I think my subjective view is that the risk of operating your own plant is higher than having solving because they've already set up and running and have qualified people running it, they have track record. And so that's, is that 20% less risk than, you know, having our own plant? Is it 2%? Is it 70%? That's hard to do, but I think it's, it's something that we could just denote. So to answer your question, no, do you want to say, well, it's 50% higher risk there than than that? You know, same thing goes for, you know, for acquisition of right of way. If we have a local, depending on what the local option is, we could have a high acquisition cost or we could have a lower acquisition cost, but there is a risk of that. And there, and there's legal risk with all of those as well. And probably something that, you know, would need our counsel's input, you know, down the line.
So if I think back to maybe a year and a half ago, you know, we were kind of heading down a similar path to this. Many of those things were sort of a high, medium, low.
Yeah.
Would that be helpful?
Yeah, maybe that is.
I turned your words around. You would say that comparatively, local treatment is higher and solving is lower.
On the treatment risk.
On treatment risk.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, you captured that.
Okay.
And that's a subjective, because you might have a director that says, well, I don't know. So I think it could be that, but you know, knowing what I know, I think that what you said is
Sure.
If I may, Madam President, one of the things to consider in this, in the risk analysis, is the transfer of risk. In other words, if if we go with a solving solution, that risk can transfer contractually. It's going to cost money, but it it removes the risk from from the district. Just another angle to consider. I'm sorry for jumping in.
No, thank you. That's, that, all comments are welcome here, so thank you.
If I may, Madam President, yeah, thank you, counsel, for that, because, yeah, contractually, there'll be a cost with that, I'm sure. But it's known and the others might not be known, so that, yeah.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Director Parks, do you want to go next?
Do we want to just go collection or do we want to just do a whole laundry list?
Is there anything else? How about anybody else on collection?
Yes. I would just say for me on collection is the middle mile to Sunny Field for effluent. Is that something we extrapolate from the gravity fed?
So I put that in the category of known. And the reason I put that in the category of known is, remember when we talked about the two contracts a few months ago? What it takes to push effluent versus gravity fed? Because we're going to collect it up, right? And push it from a single wet well or or metering station. It's the same. Yes, there'll be slightly less liquid, but, you know, we're all going to take the same number of showers. We're all going to flush the toilet, we're all going to run the dishwasher the same. So apart from taking out some of the constituents that'll be in it, it's very similar, right? So we said that we, if we ended up going with effluent, yeah, the pipes probably be the same size. It might have a little bit less, but it's really just what we pump out of those tanks, right? The 372 tanks. Everything else is still going down that path. So I took those as the same.
So you're saying the capital cost of running an effluent line is the same as a gravity fed sewer?
Yeah, both of them appear to be something we can do with laterals, lateral bearings. It's not, it's not dig a trench no matter what we do with gravity and don't dig a trench with effluent. It's pretty much, you know, we're probably talking the exact same size pipe regardless.
Great, okay.
It's going to be four, most likely six, maybe eight inch, but most likely six, based on what we're seeing at this point. And that can be laterally bored. So and it, and you know, the couple of creek crossings, you're going to have the same issues, right? It's just a question of what happens at that metering station. So to me, it's it's same, same.
Okay.
Madam President, if I could just
Yes.
carry on to that. I think if I remember right, Mr. Bowns, at one of his presentations, I don't know if it was at the Technical Committee or I think it was at the Board, where he clearly said, really, the difference in the volume of what you're pushing is the volume of a tank every five to eight years when you pump it out. So for me, at my house, all the water I use over five years, the delta is the couple hundred gallons in the tank that would have to be pumped out. So month after, so divide that up monthly throughout five to eight years, that's, that's the difference. So he essentially said, there's no difference in the volume that we're sending. There's difference in the constituency and the strength of it, but there's not really a difference in the volume.
Thanks for pointing that out. That's right. You did mention that.
Hence, the piping will be similar.
And the pump will be similar as well, maybe a little smaller, I think Tristan said, but because you're not pumping solids, you're pumping just liquid. So I think he mentioned something like maybe 10% less as far as, but but it's not a huge number. It's not like it's 50% less or 70% less.
So that's this whole conversation.
Then we have what we need. That's fine. I don't see a known category up there, though.
Yeah, that's what I said, this is kind of what I felt like was still needed. I should have added all those notes, but they've been in.
Okay, that was my question on collection.
For me, the one that probably in the collection side of it, the thing that's biggest in my mind is the ownership, if we go to an effluent system. Who owns it? Who's going to be responsible for it? Because that's going to be a big factor in our OEM, our after maintenance cost or whether the citizens, the community is going to want to have that responsibility themselves and the doing it. So to me, the ownership is an important factor that could decide for a lot of people which way they want to go. And it just, you know, you've got, I want to be able to see that we're looking at apples and apples. Because if if the homeowner owns or the property owner owns the system and has to do their own maintenance, but everything that's done on a gravity feed is covered except for the lateral, you've got quite a bit of difference. But if everything's covered by the district in both categories, then you have a different investment. And I think that's an important factor for people, because one of the things that keeps coming up is is easements, whether you want people coming on your property or not. To a sense, my my thinking is, no matter what you have, you have an electrician or a plumber or a tree trimmer or somebody coming on your property to do a service for you. They don't just show up and decide they're going to trim your tree or they're going to do something. And if the district owns it, we're not going to test, we wouldn't, I wouldn't think that we'd be saying, well, we're just going to come in anytime we want to check your tank. There's got to be technology that can be, it can be read remotely. And if there's an issue, there's communication between the homeowner and the district to get it resolved. That's my thinking. But it it can be a big factor one way or the other. And I think that, for a lot of people, will be a deciding factor.
So let me do with you, and I did it the other time on this end. Okay, what information, if you, if you were faced with making that decision today, what information would you need to make that decision? Okay, if we go affluent, it's going to be homeowner owns, making that.
I think we need to know what the homeowner is going to have to pay in that, and we may have that already. And if the district does it, how we're going to manage that. Because one of the things that is a factor, and we went up to Oregon and the people there did say their biggest hurdle, and they have a district owned system, was getting through the easement part, getting people to understand and agree to it. And so, that is, that's a cost factor, no matter what. But that could make the big difference between whether people want to say, you know, I don't even want to bother with it, I'd rather just stick with a gravity system, or if you're going to do this, I like the idea and I can go with that. So, I think we need to know so that either way, and I mean, it's going to be the community decision, but I think we have to decide on the board which way we want to focus. Because you're going, otherwise you'll have half say that they want this and the other half say they want that. So, I think we need to have a realistic evaluation of that ownership.
So, what, I'll go back to my, so what can I give you to, you know, if we agendized in March, a conversation around ownership, you know, making the assumption you're going to do effluent, ownership of systems, what information specifically can I give you that would say, okay, now I can make my decision?
I think basically, we need the pros and cons and going or communicating with communities that have that same kind of system that's of an equal size and find out how did they do it, what did they do, and how is it working? Is it working or is it not working? My biggest concern is to have the homeowner deal with the tank and everything is, most people don't know how to deal with their septic tank and what we have now.
And that's a risk.
And that's the problem. And there's a risk there. It's a big risk that if the homeowner's responsible and they don't do it right, then what? Does it mess up the whole system for everybody? Or, you know, I think it's just a matter that we need to know which path we're going to focus on. Because if it is something where it's going to be district-owned, we have to prepare for that legal part of it and it's going to be its own cost. If we're not going to do it, then that's a different story.
If I can just dovetail on what Director Nelson said, I think probably what is, would be helpful is to understand, in the scenario where the district owns the tank, what is the role, what is the responsibility of the district in terms of both the installation and ongoing maintenance operation? If the homeowner owns it, what is that, what does that level, what's that responsibility look like for the homeowner? And I think that would, again, going back to what Tom was saying, I think that would be really helpful in terms of trying to decide should the, if we were to go with effluent, and the district is going to own the tanks, knowing what we're signing up for in terms of the, not only the installation, but the ongoing maintenance and operation in terms of responsibility versus what the, if it's, if we decide, well, the homeowner should own it and here's the level of responsibility. And then again, it comes back to the risk factor for each. Because as Tom mentioned, if homeowner negligence, if the homeowner owns it or the property owner owns the tank and they fail to properly maintain the tank, what happens? What's, what is the district's level of responsibility of that? In that, is it simply all on the homeowner, the property owner? So, like I say, kind of, I have that similar issue about the ownership as well. And so, again, I think just what Tom was saying, pros and cons, but also more specifically, what would those responsibilities look like for district versus property owner?
It's going to be hard to quantify that, but.
Yeah, I don't think.
The risk or whatever, because if you say, well, the district would just don't, you're just transferring the risk.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you're transferring the risk to everybody instead of one person who maybe doesn't. And so, maybe, you know, and then the risk of, you know, the easements that Director Nelson talked about and how that would work, I would submit to you, having done acquisitions in the past, certainly not everyone will be happy with that and there will be costs associated with that.
Absolutely.
And whether there's a way to deal with that or not. But, you know, that, the risk of the unknown to the balance of the district has to factor into that.
So, I've got some things here. You can see I've listed them. So, you know, parcel owners' cost, what would we, you know, if the district owned it, what would the owner be? Some of the pros and cons, we can gather those. In fact, we've already got some lists of pros and cons.
Yes.
Of district ownership versus individual property owner ownership. Impacts, I took note of impacts of improper use and we've got examples of, you know, from, I forget where it was, somewhere in Northern California where somebody connected, they bypassed the pump that sent their effluent straight down, which you can do apparently. You know, it only takes a couple of bites. So, presumably that comes back to a contractual issue, you know, okay, fine. But, got that. Breakdown of responsibilities, I think is what you were talking about, you know, what would a reasonable, I can take a stab at that, we can agendize it for a future discussion. And then this whole conversation around easements, which is as much a legal question as anything, but I've got those. Are there other items? Okay, I need this bit of information, forward looking at you like, yes.
For me, this boils down to the O and M costs, right? It all, it's like, these are all risks, but the financial risk to the property owner is probably the major factor for decision-making, whether you're going to support moving forward with a solution or not. So, I would say O and M costs for an in-district solution, gravity-fed versus effluent, and whether it's privately owned, the onsite is owned for, the effluent would be onsite ownership or private ownership versus district ownership. What do those costs look like? So, in-district gravity, in-district effluent, and within the effluent, if it's privately owned or publicly owned or district-owned, what are those O and M costs going to be to the property owner? That's one. And then for me, the other is, if we go to Solvang, what's the ongoing, you know, what's the ongoing O and M going to be for that, to a property owner?
I've got the fact that we need O and M costs, I have those. And so, for instance, if I could slide the treatment just by way of response for a second here, you know, we're not going to have perfect numbers for treatment, but we have, I think, as it relates to the city of Solvang, two really good circuits, right? We've got the city of Solvang itself.
Yeah.
And then we've got San Ynez.
Right.
And both of those O and M numbers, meaning what does an average homeowner pay to connect new to the system? And what do they pay from an ongoing month-to-month perspective? That's all public record. I can gather that.
Yeah.
So, those are perfect examples of the kinds of things I'd love to have on this because I can get that information for you.
But to me, that's the first tranche. And once you have all that, you can say, all right, like, this is X and this is 100 times X. Do we want to spend time on the 100 times X?
Right.
Finding all the onesie-twosie stuff if it's off the table because comparatively, it's cost prohibitive.
Right.
So, love the analogy, I think it's perfect, but I want to make sure I've got that first list covered, right? So that we can even make those initial trade-offs. So, that's, I think is the perfect way to view this. That's what I'm trying to make sure we've captured, is that first layer of all this stuff.
Do you have any numbers on the Colcina plant? What that would, operation and maintenance is on that? I know we have a capital expense.
Yeah, Colcina has a sister company that does wholly outsourced O and M of their plants. And we have those numbers.
So, we can have that to compare what Solvang charges as well.
Yep.
For me, I just need that in a grid, like break it down and then we can triage from there personally. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be about what it costs, is it the best solution?
So, on that note, I want to, I'm sorry, I'm going to throw it in here, but I want to know, I really want to know definitively and maybe definitively, maybe it's a discussion. But, in the event, as Lisa mentioned, or Director Paul mentioned, you know, cost is going to be a factor. And let's be real, this is what people are mostly going to base their vote on, on the cost. And if it comes back that the cost is simply too prohibitive, I would like to know about advanced onsite wastewater as an option. I mean, I know there's been discussion about, you know, the regional water quality board doesn't want it and the lamp and da-da-da-da. But if we get down to a point where we've exhausted all these options and the community has said, no way, it's too expensive, I'm not willing to sign up for that kind of a debt load, I would like to know that we, can we, can we revisit onsite wastewater where applicable as an option? Just going to throw it out there.
Yeah, so, that's an answer you'd have to get from the water board, right? That's not one, I can't get that answer for you.
Right.
Because it really comes down, if I understand the issues at play here, to how hard they want to be. They could essentially say, no, you're under two and a half acres, it's not appropriate. You can put one in, but we're going to keep pushing a community sewer. As soon as we've got one, you're going to throw that system out, you're going to connect it to another one, or we're going to red-tag your house in an extreme likelihood, very, 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 very low, but in extreme scenario, that's what they could do, right? I mean, that's, again, I use Los Osos as an example, they said zero construction, right? This is not, this is not something made up. No, you can't remodel your bathroom because you're under a pro-admission zone. No, you can't add that kitchen sink that you wanted to add, none of that is allowed. And you had to go through certified toilets and showerheads and all sorts of stuff that is giving me a.
Well, and I think we actually heard that very thing, I heard that from the regional board, that the advanced onsite is not the option that they'll accept.
So, perhaps.
I agree, I heard that as well. I'm just saying that if we end up, if the cost is such that the community says, no way, I'm not, I'm not going to go for this, and we have a failure on a 218, well, it's our plan B.
I think the other thing going on to cost too, there's a, there's a factor that we need to consider is that I believe that we should get grants to help with the capital cost. And I believe that knowing what other areas have gotten funding for, we are due, just like everybody else was, including the carpentrya that got a grant for that. When you look at the area that you're talking about there, it would be insulting to say that Los Olivos is not entitled to something. And so, when we talk about, well, there might be a financial difference between one or the other, you know, one might be more, have more of the interest of the people who would give a grant. And, you know, I've heard what their, what their preferences are and what they would be more likely to support. And I think that needs to be included in that as well, so. So, maybe, now that, maybe that's a factor in there about, you know, low, medium, high, which of these are more likely to garner the favor of granting? I mean, the regional board flat out told us, we want you to go to Solvang, that's our preference. That's what they've said. Because they want a consolidated community system because there's less likely of a failure. They've said that. So, if we end up going there, we say, fine, then you should be willing to help us with it. And, you know, I think we've got a strong argument to push either way, even if it's not that and we're putting to bed this problem, I think they should be willing to help us. Knowing what they really like would be helpful.
I think advanced onsite would be tough just with the downtown and the high, you know, the high-density houses over there, there's going to have to be a solution for that because they don't have the room for an advanced onsite, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, that's why I said we're.
So, we would have to have some, yeah, but then we, still, there has to be something for that area, so, it just, you know, if they're all half acres, well, God, maybe.
Sneak something on there.
Sneak a man, you know, like they did right down there, you know, bottom of the ground. I mean, yes, it's working fine, but I just, God, the downtown corridor is just, you know.
Because I just wanted to bring it up because, like I say, I think, you know, it's, cost is going to be front and foremost on most people's minds.
But can you somehow get an idea of those, like grant possibilities?
So.
With local versus solving?
So, grants right now, after the new administration.
Everything's frozen.
You're just not going to see any for the next four years. Not of any substance, it doesn't look like. They've cut funding, even the water board is saying that what funding is available is being shifted in other directions. So, our ability to do grants is going to get harder and harder and harder the next few years. Who knows what will happen after that? But, in the short term, it's going to be really tough for these.
But it doesn't mean we don't. So, that's why we need to bring, that's why on mine is, excuse me, but, you know, we need to know the highest probability, what scenario is the highest probability of getting funding? You know, is it effluent or gravity? Is it phased in district versus, you know, one, one project that's regionalized? So, those are, you know, it's hard to forecast what that's going to look like, but short of potential grant funding, government funds, I mean, it's, then it becomes financing, right? So, maybe it's more favorable to finance, I don't know, in the next four years. So, you know, and to your point, Director Farram, it's not what they like, it's part of it's what they like, but I think we need to have some serious conversations about what they can get behind and advocate for, not just what they like, right? If they're, if.
Right.
So, how do we enlist them as advocates?
Didn't Solvang say they'd work with us as well? That's the direction we decided to go as far as grants and whatnot? No?
Solvang doesn't have grants. They would be, for instance, they're getting grants where they're disney upgrades.
For the upgrades.
Yeah.
Well, we'd have to do some, anyway, let's not get ahead.
So, maybe if I could just briefly, what you're saying is, if we were causing the cost to Solvang, would they join with us to get a grant?
Right.
Yes. But they're not going to give us a grant.
Correct. Right, but they'll, for the transmissions lines through Solvang and whatnot?
That would probably be on us, but, you know, the piece, for instance, that's in their infrastructure today, that has to, yeah, you know, if there was a grant out there, we could be co-applicants for such a grant.
Mutually beneficial.
Because there's a split on that project anyway, so.
Presumably. So, other things back to collection.
Right.
Keep bringing this back, sorry. Getting lots, which is good, and I can start trying to find some of this stuff, but.
Any? Okay, hearing none, let's go on to treatment then. All right. So, what do we need to know in order to make a decision about treatment?
For me, on treatment, the biggest thing is the cost that STANTEC's got to give us. Because if that cost to transmit, to hook in with the Solvang, I mean, we saw some other numbers and it was tremendous. And you've also got to figure with that, are the personnel costs that go with it? You're going to have to have worker comp for employees, you're going to have to have employees and all kinds of different things, which we may have to have anyway, but if we have a treatment plant that we're running, it's way different than if we can merge with Solvang. And it's already, we already know that that's what they'd like us to do. And to me, if the number for that is, it's almost a no-brainer to a certain point. You know, that if we got a good number, we can get in with that and it's something we can work with Solvang, then why would we want to have our own facility that we have to do a whole lot with? And we know there's going to be site issues and everything else where Solvang's is already a resolved issue. That's just my thinking, so, but it comes down to what the costs are going to be. And we won't know that until we get it from STANTEC. That's the only thing I want to hear.
I would add, so something that would be helpful for me is to know a little bit more detail about what the San Ynez CSD's contract with Solvang looks like. And in particular, I'm interested in what, obviously, what the per property cost is or per hookup connection, what that looks like. But what about the ongoing maintenance and operation? For example, is, if there's repairs that need to be done or, I don't know, you know, stormwater infiltration and somehow, like, you know, what we know happened, pipes got damaged with all that mudslide, you know, what is Solvang's and CSD, what is the division of responsibility for the ongoing maintenance of the transmission line?
So, if I could take 30 seconds and kind of draw a picture, hopefully for people here. So, the city of Solvang has all of their collection for the city, right? And it goes to a single, think of it as a pump, right? It then pushes things under the river into the treatment plant on the other side, right? Okay? We saw that station in one of the reports that we saw from, I think it was the WSC report, might have been the girl, but anyhow. Keep in mind that we're going to be a little different than San Ynez, because San Ynez basically runs their own pipes all the way to that pump.
Oh, right.
They don't join with the city's infrastructure until that pump, basically, right? Whereas we're going to have from Sunny Field Park all the way through the city of Solvang to that pump, shared infrastructure. It's going to be a little different there, right? So, when it comes to what San Ynez CSD does, they own everything until it gets to that pump. So, the pipe breaks, that's 100% on them, right? They just pay for a portion of the shared plank. And they're 20% on it. Interestingly, now, I can give you the contracts, in fact, I recently rereviewed them. The 80% that is owned by the city of Solvang, funny enough, that actually connected, they funny enough, that actually calls out Los Alamos as a potential future user, and that that decision is solely up to the city of Solvang. It's not some, even though San Inez is a 20% owner, they don't have 20% of the vote. It's up to the city of Solvang, because it's their 80% of the capacity that they would be, subleasing, selling, whatever you want to call it, right? So I can give you those contracts. There's a couple of them over the years that are in place. I, I've also already have from San Inez, you know, here connecting is a new, you know, they just connected, it's either five or 25 new homes. I've got the numbers that they're basically charging them to, for their connection.
Yeah.
And then they go into the standard OEM, and I have those numbers as well. I, I haven't gathered them, if you're new in the city of Solvang, but it's the same equation, right? I'm sure you could, I could just ask the city, if I came in at a vacant, you know, I've taken a lot, I want to connect, what's the charge, right? And there's going to be a number. So we can, we can figure that one out. I don't think that I have too much to... And again, as I said earlier, I think the San Inez numbers and the Solvang numbers are kind of surrogates, but we're not going to match either of those, right? Both of those systems have been in place a long time. San Inez still has a lot of that old clay pipe, right, that leaks heavily in the rain and leaks the other way when it's really dry. We're going to be using some sort of like PVC, which doesn't leak, right? So it's a little bit different equation. And all our parts will be new, at least to begin with, whereas they're dealing with stuff that might be from, you know, 1985, you know? So a few years old at least. So...
Okay.
I can give you some of those surrogates, but again, kind of like Director Faram's earlier comment, you know, the numbers I give you are not exactly what they will be for us. But they're, they're going to be ballparky, to your point earlier, Director Palmer, you know, it's not going to be a 10x, it'll be a 1.2, you know, that sort of thing.
And guys, with the connection fee, say we were to connect with Solvang, I know the new connection fee is whatever, just say $70,000, or whatever that is. I mean, Solvang's not going to charge each house here $70,000. Has there been any discussion at all about initiation fee for the district?
So, yes, is the short answer.
Is it a million dollars? Is it just, what would be the initiation fee for all the service that we have right now to go? And then, okay, then someone says wants to add blah, 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 then that would be a new service, but for existing service, there would be a...
Yeah. So one of the things that, I'll use San Inez as an example now, right? So they've contracted for X amount, right? City of Solvang doesn't care how many houses are behind that, right? They only care that you contracted for 20% of our total capacity, therefore, do whatever you want with that 20% capacity.
So then San Inez charges this, whatever it is, for the new connection. It's not Solvang.
Exactly.
So it would be us charging new connection fees?
At some level, yes, yes. And so, you know, we could, and I, I have a meeting with them on Thursday, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Already? And this is one of the things I've previously spoken to the city manager about, you know, we need to better understand how some of these other costs might work. You know, to me, for instance, Director Faram was talking earlier about that shared infrastructure that has to be upgraded. They have to upgrade a bunch of that anyway, because it's old and needs to be bigger, because they're building other stuff in the city. You know, one of the starting points, might not be a bad one, would be, look, we'll pay for the upgrades for the miles we need, and you guys don't have to worry about that, right? As part of our initiation fee, buying fee, whatever, let's just pay for that.
Right.
Right? Because it makes sense. We can't connect until that's done anyway. They, they weren't planning on doing some of it for another 15 years, so let's do it now, get it done, we'll pay for it as our initiation. It's easier reasonable. I know if I was in the city manager's seat, I'd say, yeah, good.
Hallelujah.
Take care of that, it's done, all right, I don't have to worry about it.
I don't have to think about that. That's all essentially part of the negotiation.
And it's not a whole lot to do with connection.
I say it's all essentially part of the negotiation.
Correct.
For getting whatever contract agreement.
Yeah.
And I raised that with the city manager previously.
But I think also on that, and maybe counsel can opine on this, but my understanding of the law is, while there's a negotiation and how and what, and there's, there's wiggle room in there, you know, Solvang can't say, well, it looks like you need us pretty bad, and so therefore, we're going to charge you this. They can't charge us more than the cost of their service.
Right.
Right.
And, and I think they acknowledge that. And then I'll say, they've never, I've never heard them allude to, well, it'll, yeah, so.
You haven't seen them though?
Yeah.
They're going to pay for all of ours.
Right.
What else under treatment?
So I think for having a robust public workshop on treatment, we need to have a well-defined in-district solution. So that includes citing costs, even if it's an average per acre. I think it includes the amount of acreage we need based on our collection and our disposal, the percolation chambers, how much acreage is that, and what sites potentially are in district that meet that criteria. And then lastly, is some indication from Dunn or Los Alamos School on whether they're interested in playing or negotiating with it, to, to have a facility or disposal on their property. So those are the things I think I would want to see answers to, going into a, you know, Solvang versus in-district, right? And what the costs are associated with those.
So, for instance, let's take disposal, just because that's, that's a simple one. We know we would need two acres to start and another two acres, so we need four acres somewhere. Could be in-district. You're saying, find the sites in-district where four acres are?
Well, I'm just, but what, even if they're available or not, I mean, that's a pretty small inventory in-district or adjacent to. So what are our options? What meet that, what meet the criteria for the acreage we need to do an in-district project?
Well, I don't know if we fully understand what the expansion requirements of the...
100% and 100%.
100% and 100%.
Yep.
And it, it should, because failure's not an option.
So you have to have, it's basically, it keeps doubling. So you have to have your field, and you have to have 100% backup, and then you have to have 100% for that somewhere else.
So three hundred?
Yeah. So it's basically four times. What, what you need to start with, you need four times identified. First one has to be on hand, the other one has to be identified.
Okay.
So, let me, let me take, so that's for treatment and disposal that you're, that you're referring to.
In-district, yeah, local.
Yeah. If we're going to have a local solution, we need to know what the costs are associated with providing an in-district solution.
And we know the size based on...
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I got that?
I know, we do find the size, we got to worry about lawsuits, because I'm sure that the neighbors will be suing because they don't want them.
Yeah, I know.
I'm afraid. That worries me.
What else under treatment?
Um, I think, you know, we, we've talked about this one here, just briefly, remember bringing it up again as well, and that is the availability of skilled labor. What does that look like? What are our options? I know close, you know, as you said, has a service, so technically, we could contract out to them for the management. Do they even have capacity for that right now? Like I said, I know this is, this is a big challenge really for everybody, is finding skilled operators in this state, because you have to be certified at a certain level. There just aren't that many folks that are, that are doing that.
There's a local contract operator thing.
Yeah. Right. But I mean, we're, I think, you know, we're, we're talking about something much bigger than, for example, what's on the Matties property. And by the way, that also brings into the, if we do a local option, what does that mean for Matties? Or, you know, do they continue to use their, their system, but the excess comes to us for treatment? Or, you know, I mean, that's kind of a, bit of a question mark, what hap, what happens with them? Because we already know they're 30% over capacity for their treatment facility. Anyway.
I got it?
Thank you.
I don't have an answer.
I know, that's okay.
I was waiting for the answer.
Let's see. Okay. Any, anything else on treatment and/or disposal? All right. Any other general items for, to, in order to give Guy some more specific direction, tangible deliver, with tangible deliverables?
So what I'm envisioning, trying to put together, just, you know, I'll, I'll probably go back to where we were, again, at least two years ago, if I know there was a, a view of it at the time, and I'll fill some more of that in. I'll add these as rows and columns or however it makes sense. I'm sorry to use a spreadsheet, but it's either that or I, you know, pull up this topic and just a list of things related to that topic. At some point, I know, I've had conversations with you, President Kennedy, about, you know, it, it's, it's hard for people, I think, because if you haven't attended all the meetings, you miss a key piece, right? And so I'll have to think of how do we go back and re-educate everybody on the things that we may have talked about three or four different times, but persons new to the community, or they weren't involved heavily then. And how do we re-educate them on these things? And it's, it's going to be an interesting thing.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's a lot of, of knowledge, right? Even, even people that have been on the board for a few years, you know, I, when I talk to you and I tell you things sometimes, you're like, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Like, yep, that's the way it works. You're like, oh, wow, I guess it makes sense, but I never really thought about it. So...
Right.
Um, it's, it's a tough thing to do that education. So it's probably part of these workshops, but we're not going to be able to get down to the nitty-gritty that might be the one nugget that somebody needs, right? So for the five of you, I've got to get there, is the way I view it, because you're the ones that are ultimately going to make the recommendation based on input from the community and what you need and see. And I want to make sure I've answered all those questions, but it's a tough one, for sure.
Absolutely. So I would just add, and I know, Director Faram talked about this earlier, and this idea that sort of a pros and cons, or risks and impact. And I can email you, but I had, I actually, on, so just in the spirit of transparency, I did call Guy before this meeting, and said, I want to give you a heads up. This was what's on my mind, and I don't want to broadside you in the meeting with it. But, so I, I saw, we have infrastructure and engineering risks, and I listed out a couple of things there, funding and financial risks, community and social risks, environmental and regulatory risk, and, and operational and maintenance risk. And I can email you this list, but I think that would also be helpful, because, I mean, on one hand, especially as when we present to the community, because again, it's just what you said, in terms of the education, I think a lot of the folks in the district, whether they've attended regularly or not, may not understand all these various factors that play into the decision. And, you know, why something may be more preferable over, or one aspect of what we're talking may be preferable based on the, the risk and the impact, not only to the community, but to the individual property owner. So like I said, I'll email you my list after. Like I said, I just think that, personally, I think that would be helpful.
I agree, because I had additional risks. I mean, there's other, there's the social, there's financial. I think it's also important, then, this makes me think, to have status quo. What's the risk of status quo?
Exactly.
So you have, you have status quo, and you can compare, because there's environmental risk, there's financial risk, there's, there's oper, I mean, there's, you know, you talk about risk and impact of continuing to have these properties, you know, on subject.
Well, exactly, it's property value risk.
So anyway, I think, is coming back to how we synthesize this, particularly for the public, is reminding folks of why we're here in the first place, to solve the problem, what's the risk of the status quo, as well as the risks of the potential solutions we're contemplating.
Right.
Yeah, you know, President Kenny and I met with the Water Board, because they asked us to. And this all ties really closely to the kinds of things that they were asking us about earlier this week, even though this is already addendized, luckily, happily, maybe appropriately. But to your point, Director Palmer, I, I think that's one of those ones that I think is best to list from them in some fashion, right? Because ultimately, if the, the do-nothing option, the status quo option, is they step in at some level, and I don't know what that looks like, and it's, you know, I, I know what the extremes are, I know what Los Alamos look like, and it's that sort of a scenario. But you're, if nothing else, you're right, and I'm, I'm not sure, if you talk to 20% of our, the, the, you know, let's say 20% are attending our meetings, that 20% might understand a little bit. But the other 80% of the community has no clue what the, the, no, no, the status quo impacts might be.
Would the Water Board go on record or send a letter and say, here's the risk of status quo?
They've said it in meetings before, but they haven't written it down.
Well, I'm just saying, for the benefit of everybody who, you know, if you haven't been following along in the...
I think we could ask them to do that and just, you know.
Because I think that would be helpful regardless.
Yeah, if their statement is that the status quo is not an option, we can say that.
Right. What you said, what are the consequences, what would be the potential consequences?
I think that'd be a good exercise to go through anyway with them, frankly.
And if I may, Madam President?
Yes.
Their reluctance, I'll say, to provide you with such a letter should not be tantamount to saying, well, they're not going to do anything. I, I'm not sure that the board will, will commit itself to, to a course of action and writing, but we can give it a try.
Okay. Thank you.
Like I said, they've said it, but I've, I've never seen it written.
Right.
Let's get it in a meeting.
All right. So what I'm envisioning, just so, before we go to public comment, and I know you want to go there, we will. So what I'm envisioning is I'll pull all this together and I'll agenda it again for next month, right? In the meantime, and I'll talk about this more as part of my later schedule, you know, I, I do need to start working on a schedule, because we're going to be going to LAPCO, that's the next item. So some of this has to be in to get, come together as a scheduling exercise, right? Get this piece of information right here, this by there. And the project management subcommittee and I are going to have to have a conversation about schedules here soon, rather than later, because LAPCO's right on the corner.
That's right, right on the corner.
So all of this, I see coming back next month for further conversation. I may begin to, to provide, I'll call it answers with it, to the extent I have them. If it's not looking like what you need, you need to tell me at that time. I'll say that again then, but I, I need to know. It's, it's not, if you say, Guy, I hate that, okay, fine, tell me what you want, I'll get it for you. So...
Okay. So before we go to comment, do what is what you have right now, is it clear enough, or do you need more specificity and direction?
So I'm going to take all of this and put it into something that makes sense to me. I, I recognize it's going to make sense to me, may not make sense to everybody. I'm going to bring it back next month.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask you that question.
Okay.
And I'm going to say, look, if I give you, if I fill all these empty boxes, and there would be a lot of empty boxes, if I filled them with information, and I said to you, can you make a decision? It's good to be back to you.
Okay, fair enough. All right.
Is that enough time to, if you bring it back to us next month? I'm wondering if we need to meet before then, just to review that work? Just, just putting it out there?
Yeah.
In order to meet, to have it ready for when we get the study in April?
I think it will be. And the reason I say that is, we're going to get the study and talk about the study in April, and we're going to be planning presumably for a workshop that's, I'll call it May, maybe June. So I've got a little runway there.
Okay, I'm just asking.
I think it's enough time. I, I didn't hear anything in here that, oh my gosh, I'm going to need 80 hours just to do that one item, that kind of thing, so.
So I'll just add, for us as a board, it's really important, when this comes back, everybody take serious time to review it and make sure that we are not only giving Guy appropriate directions, but also we're getting the answers that we, that we need, and that we can, that we think the community's going to ask as well. That's, that's a big part of this. Okay, perfect. All right, with that...
One, Guy, so when you get this fleshed out more, this spreadsheet fleshed out more, can, can, can you post it and then send us a copy as well, so we can go over it before, so we can, so we can kind of look at it and make little notes in it before the meeting?
I can do that with the agenda, but other than that, I've got to be really careful with the Brown Act, right?
Well, that's what I just wanted, I mean, I'm trying to say, post it, not, not send it to us in secret. I mean, just...
No, no, I wouldn't.
Just release it to the public, so then we can look at it as well.
So for instance, this, this week's agenda, I posted a week ago.
Right.
I can do that again, so you have at least a week runway prior to the meeting.
Yeah, just, just so then we can kind of mark it up and say, okay, oh, no, this is perfect, or whatever, then instead of like, I'm looking at now, it's like, oh.
Yep.
Yeah. So just recognizing that we won't have oodles of time, once that is posted, everybody make a priority of reviewing it. And if you need to call Guy because you have a question about something prior to the meeting, you could, you can do that. you can do that as well, so that you can, we can have everything ready, meeting time. Okay. Okay, with that, public comment. Is there anybody in the room that would like to address the board on this agenda item?
Hi, good evening. I just have a question that wasn't addressed in Guy's report. Is the Sullen Cartel Hall, that made an announcement that Congress had approved grant funding for Central Coast, ten four million dollars? And I was wondering if that money was tied to any specific solution or, like, how are we going to make sure that we attain those funds?
General Manager Savage, would you like to give an update on this?
So, I have to respond. So there's several things that have happened as it relates to the word of funding, and I'm assuming that's the funding you're referring to, Water Resources Development Act funding. We are in the queue to potentially receive four million dollars. It hasn't made it through appropriation yet, and that's an important step. So it's been approved by the Congress, it's been approved by the Senate, but it's not funded. So the announcements were odd to me, because I am quite certain, and I've had conversations with staff in Congressman's office, that I told them, "Look, I'll buy them a big check if you give us a real one." "We'll help this get four million dollars off paper," personally. And they said, "Yeah, we're still waiting for the appropriation." So the funding has not been given to us yet. Multiple steps, and not all of them have been taken.
Yes.
Is there a map? And I'm sorry, I came late, it's May, I'm losing patience. Is there a map of the likely alignment for Los Olivos to sunny Fields Park?
So.
Yes.
I'd love to get your name later, too, so we're still talking about, kind of, from an engineering perspective, high-level, maybe? So none of this is certain, right? Water flows north to south, so toward the bridge, right?
I actually understand a whole lot, so this is really just kind of a question.
So the only map says it's going to go down Alamo, but...
And among the things I didn't hear you guys talk about is whether or not there would be a connection point in now or has that been a discussion, not in? So it's just kind of been a discussion. I, yes, or, I'm sorry.
So no?
I'm sorry, I'm one of those terrible lawyer people, I just keep a lawyer for six weeks all night, I've done a lot of lawyer stuff. And so my brain is, I listen to this, it ends up this kind of some question and question.
So very brief, and I'd happily meet with you anytime, we'll get your plans and stuff. Ballard's outside our district, not our concern.
I understand, but it would make a, I would think it potentially could make a difference for funding, potential sizing, potential, and lots of other things like that, to have, here's, I also don't want our constituents to hate the project for any stupid reason, so I'm not trying to throw things in and make them hate it for a stupid reason. It just seems like that may be one of the things you would want to know, if there were a hypothetical community between here and solving, what hypothetical difference might that make? And then, do you have, is there an interim level that's being allowed for projects that be subject system improvements between now and however long the ultimate solution is, because you're working on an ultimate solution? Or is there nothing like that, because you're working on an ultimate solution?
So this is public comment as opposed to discussion, so if you...
I'm happy to just follow.
Perfect, that was going to be, thank you.
That's all my only question.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, do we have that, how about online, is there any?
There's one.
Okay.
Hi, Catherine Roar. Wow, you guys covered a lot, and it was impressive. To Mr. Wilbrand's question, I would just say regarding Ballard, I know you guys have been in discussion with council, and you've discussed whether communities along Alamo and Toto can tap into a transmission line. And so I hope that at some point, you're going to share with the public what those legal findings are, so that we have some idea how growth-inducing this plan might be. My sense is that a gravity system screams growth and screams tap-on in to our gravity line, going straight into solving. I would ask that you revisit with Mr. Bounce, because I was puzzled by Mr. Savage's statement that the affluent line would be the same size as a line transmitting actual sewage. And so my understanding had been directional boring was an option, and a very small line was an option, it would be much more cost-effective. So to my mind, an affluent-only line to solving is also growth-prohibitive, and that's something that many of us in the Valley are interested in, so I'm hoping you guys are going to look at that again. Again, the contract that Santinaz has with solving is important, and I hope you'll have council look at any agreement you enter into regarding liabilities for spills, or any discharge violations that solving might have. What is the mechanism to pass those on to Los Olivos, just so your community is aware? And I want to say, you guys have got these monitoring wells. We've got monitoring wells, and they show your water's clean on one side of the town, and it's clean south of the town. And so as much as the Water Board has come in and told you they're going to require a solution, and if you don't come up with one, they're going to come up with one. They haven't told you what solution you need to implement. They've never said that. They've never said you have to do gravity, or you can't do step. And so we need to know whether all the areas that don't actually show contamination of the wells, that you've spent money on those wells, and spent money on that testing, is that relevant? And can that shape your response to this? To Director Palmer's point about there being staff available, I've experienced that it's contrary to that. Having staff local that's competent and qualified to service a sewage treatment plant? I haven't seen any evidence of it. So I think you guys maybe want to ask Mr. Savage to look into that, and make sure we could actually find unionized, qualified sewage treatment plant operators to run this thing if you decide to do a solution here in or near adjacent to town. And finally, I just want to say, your legal counsel, Mr. Savage is totally correct. The idea of easements and how complicated that is, to me, as a lawyer, this is not a brainbuster. So I would encourage you to consult with your legal counsel and ask them about easements to come on to the property if you've got a district-owned system, and what your rights are, and how very, very simple that might be, because that might alleviate many of these concerns. And I'll stop now, best of luck.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else online?
Madam President, just to respond, the proposed line with solving that Stanck's looking is a pressure line. In either case, it's the same line. I think we said that earlier.
Right.
It's the same line.
Yeah. Okay, very good, thank you. Let's move on then to item 10, planning for the upcoming Santa Barbara County LAFCO presentation scheduled for April 3rd.
All right, I mentioned this briefly a minute ago. President Kennedy and I are scheduled to appear in front of LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission, on April 3rd, a little over a month and a half away. I expect, you know, we'll have the usual public comment there, some of which will probably be asking the same kind of conversation we were just having on the last one, is, "Okay, when are you guys going to drive to a decision?" I think I heard that a bit from the Water Board folks last week, you know, "Let's get to a schedule, let's maintain that schedule and move forward." If I reflect back to 2023, you know, as I've said to this group in the past, you know, one of the requirements coming out of the 2023 meeting was a schedule, we gave them a schedule at the time. I listed it as somewhat aspirational, as opposed to sort of realistic. Hopefully, if we can get to May and get to some decisions, we can put together a realistic schedule that, you know, barring something like funding, we could actually keep. You know, I do think that funding, of course, will have to be something that President Kennedy talks to LAFCO about, you know. If you have a small budget, trying to do some of these bigger items moving forward will be difficult unless we can come up with some funding. But outside of that, I'm sure they'll want the same sorts of things. I've been providing them a quarterly report. I've not had a whole lot of questions come back from LAFCO members related to that quarterly report. We've given them at least, you know, several times, basically about twice a year, we've presented to them, just to say, "Here's where we're at, where we're looking at." I think we've heard that, you know, us narrowing the solutions down, as we've been doing the last couple of years, getting the wells in place are all positive things, but, you know, LAFCO, I'm sure, will hear, much like we did two years ago, a conversation about, "Well, if we don't do this," and they'll turn to supervisor or two that are on LAFCO and say, "Well, guys, you ready to take this back?" And they'll say, "No, no, give them another two years, but after that," you know, kind of thing. I do think, you know, I've heard from community, I've heard from maybe an individual or two of you, you know, I think there's a lot of focus on this next two years to make sure that we really move forward, right? Been at it for seven years, let's call it now, it's time to move forward to something? Or think about some significantly different approaches, maybe not this board, not this board. But I think that's what we'll hear from LAFCO, right? I think they're saying, "Look, you guys have been an organization, and you need to get to a solution, or next time, if you come back in 2027, we may not be as open to continuing this." So, and I see heads shaking, and we're like, "No, we don't want to have to go back then like that." But I'm just, I'm trying to be realistic with what I think the board is facing and what President Kennedy and I will be looking at in early April. So this item, let me bring it back to this, you know, we will presumably be asking for an extension. I don't know what beyond, you know, continue to give regular reports. They may want a schedule that is a little tighter, and a little less aspirational, and more realistic. It should probably include some of the things we talked about earlier, you know, assessment engineering reports, and rate studies, and, you know, a little more detail as opposed to, you know, big buckets of things. Again, I would work with the project management subcommittee to help kind of build that thing. We'll have to have some cut at it before Julie and I go to LAFCO on the 3rd of April. So this item is really just to make sure the board is A, aware of that, and the public is aware of that, and that B, if there's specific input that the board wants to give to President Kennedy and me as we begin putting that presentation together, because it is a presentation, or other things that you want to discuss, then this is an opportunity for the board at large to give us direction.
Okay, thank you. So we'll discuss on the board first, then we'll open up to public comment. Anybody have any specific comments, directions, items? I'm going to look at you, because you're, you're going to jump in, go for it.
I just think that, you know, we're at the point that, you know, where we have to make a decision on what this is and what it looks like.
Right.
We'll never have all the information to do that, a lot of it's subjective, but we have to put together, you know, that project. And then a schedule, probably the best schedule that you could hold is carve out whatever thousand a year out of our tax increment, and figure out how many decades that would be before we could do that.
Right.
Without grant support. You know, but in the end, if we don't get the funding and we can't do it, then we have to talk about, you know, because just continuing to meet and talk about it's not doing anybody any good either. And so if that falls back on the county or whatnot, if we're unsuccessful getting grant funding to push forward something, I don't know what the alternative is, so. That's not a good option, but it's reality. We know, I mean, if they get it.
Great. Well, I think we can put together a timeline based on a May workshop. I mean, even if we get to a project description and get an EIR started, they know how long that's going to take, you know? So I think, I'm looking at, we are not, we need to have a project management committee meeting soon. I think and rough something out, and then bring it back, or I think it'd be, I think it would be a mistake to at least not make an attempt to give them something, you know, based on where we are today, that shows, you know, progress. And I'd also be in, I think we should be open to asking for a one-year extension, instead of two. Just showing that, I mean, even if it's to come back in a year and ask for it again, if we're, I'm just raising it, because one more gets us to 10 years, which is crazy. No, but I'm, I'm just...
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah. I know what you're saying.
Is it reasonable that the project management committee, subcommittee could put together something in time for the March meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it possible to add on to that? Could we look at, you know, what are some of the major milestones? I mean, having a schedule based on a May workshop, but the real point is that we come to a decision about something, you know, whatever that solution that is, that's going to be our project description, what are the additional milestones after that that we're going to need in order? Because our next big major milestone, of course, is going to be working towards the taxpayer vote.
Right, but we have to get the EIR done prior to that.
Well, there's that, there's the rate assessment.
And we need, there's, those are the, that's what I mean, are all the price tags, and then we're going to need help funding.
Exactly.
To Tom's point, you know, because to get an EIR done is two years of our revenue, practically. So, anyway, so, but I think once we have that schedule, then we can turn around and go back to the Water Board and the county and say, "If you want us to keep ownership and you want this to move forward..."
Here's what we need.
"...we need help funding these things," so.
Does that work? Is that enough?
Even if we have to do it online, we can do a project management committee.
I'll wrap the two numbers afterward, so we can get some things done.
Okay.
Public comment.
Okay. All right, anything, nothing else from the board? We'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the room? Okay, no takers? We have any hands up online?
Uh, Ms. Roar.
Ms. Roar.
Hi, I just remember last time we were at LAFCO, sorry to say it out loud, it's like saying Voldemort, but Hillary Hauser came pretty hard for this board, and I don't want to see that happen again. And so to the extent that you're talking about coming up with a, I think Director Palmer's idea of a one-year extension as an alternative is an excellent idea. And I also think maybe narrowing this field a little bit, I mean, this idea that everything is wide open. You, that assessment engineer, I know you guys think that they did something for you, but what they gave you was an Excel spreadsheet based on square footage or acreage per parcel, and that is not a legitimate legal basis for allocating the cost of this project across the parcels in our district. So I would just encourage you again to go to council. I know, I'm a lawyer, I always recommend going to your lawyer, but I really recommend talking with council before that LAFCO meeting about what it is that you ought to be able to ask for from your assessment engineer, because you're 100% correct, your voters are going to vote based on what more you're going to ask for them to lay out out of pocket. And I would just, I know this isn't popular, but I would go back to the plan that Director O'Neil, the Air Supply Director O'Neil, presented god knows how many years ago now. It was a great plan, it was a small plan, it was an affordable plan, and I really, really hope it's still on the table for this community. Good luck, and I will support you at LAFCO.
Thank you. All right, any other hands up?
Seeing none.
Okay. All right, do you have what you need?
We need so much.
All right, very good. Then we'll move on to subcommittee reports. I'll start since Finance Committee is up first, and as General Manager Savage noted, we did not meet last Friday due to lack of quorum, but all the invoices from both January and February are listed in the packet. And so that's where we're at with that. And then, let's see, next subcommittee, oh, you have me as Grant Subcommittee, I don't think I'm the president on that. on that one anymore.
No.
Sorry. Okay, Grants Subcommittee is, whoever's on Grants Committee, is there anything to report? I don't think they met.
So they have not met, but they're scheduled to meet Friday.
Okay.
They're going to select a new chair.
All right.
That's a hangover.
All right, Project Management Subcommittee.
Uh, no report. We'll have one, we'll have one shortly though, based on the last discussion.
All right. Beautiful. Technical Subcommittee.
No, no report. We need Friday as well.
Okay. Awesome. Perfect. All right. Next item on the agenda is the General Manager and District Engineer Comments.
Well, I pulled mine up. Why don't we get District Engineer Pike to step up and add you some information?
Just some good news on our grant, the second funding. We had good news, did it for yesterday, the final report, except that they'll fund the second half of the grant. And the invoices have been submitted. We've had one correction and then submitted some additional information and no additional communication. So it looks like we may receive that by March 75.
Great. Thank you.
Good job.
That brings applause.
Yeah, it does warrant an applause. It's taken a long time to get there. Thank you.
All right. Moving on then. So my summary status report is attached to the agenda. You can see part of it here. So Doug and I did meet with StanTech, I don't know, three weeks ago, a month ago. Just to kind of kick things off, get it going, we made some original, kind of had some original discussions about where things should be, maybe could be, talked about various potential components. Tech Committee is going to meet with StanTech on Friday and kind of rehash some of that, but reconfirm some of it as well. WSC, we did get their final report. It's on the website. So you can, you can see it there. Most of it is a hard time. You guys approved that audit, so we're good to move there. President Kennedy again presented at the Los Olivos School Board three weeks ago.
Yeah, it was first, first week in January, I think.
Was it that long ago?
Yeah, it was that long ago.
A month ago. That same night, I, after that meeting, I traveled to the City of Solving. There, they were giving an update on their upgrade project. Importantly for us, I think in that is, they are still targeting 2028 for completion of that update, upgrade project. And if you recall, the WSC Corolla Report said, yeah, you guys could technically connect today, but you really should wait until that upgrade is done. And so they, the Public Works and City Manager for the City of Solving plan to come back to their board, or their City Council, rather, in May to talk about the upgrade project and to talk more about what we're up to and how that might look and get some more direction. City Council, in that meeting, you know, didn't really talk a whole lot about us. I think there was one very brief question and City Council, or City of Solving staff stood up and said, yeah, there's Los Olivos people in the back. They're here. Do you have any questions? They didn't have any questions. I mentioned earlier, President Kennedy and I met with the EHS and the Water Board. It was a good meeting, you know, again, I think, you know, I took it and we kind of talked about it afterward. They want to see us move forward. They want to see us move forward successfully to a Prop 218 property owner vote. They do have a preference, you know, obviously, they, they would like to see us go to Solving essentially because they know that long-term management of it will be easier, in their opinion. So I think what they were trying to do is help us along the path so that they can, you know, it's kind of a let us help you. And one way we can help you is by helping you get on the right path, make sure you're putting together schedules that are believable and that sort of thing versus aspirational, which we agree with. One of the, the best comments in the whole meeting to me, I'll just share, one of the people at the Water Board said, yeah, we had these really tough conversations. And, you know, I was at the county for 20 years. I didn't ever once feel like I had a tough conversation with the Water Board yet. They were, you know, honest. That's different than a tough conversation, right? And I think, I think they're, they're harking back maybe to my days dealing with Los Osos when we were talking about other things or something. I'm not sure. But it was a fine meeting, in my opinion. They, they do seem like they're from the government. They want to help in a real way, not just, you know, kind of joking there. They, they do want to help. I think if we hold workshops, and we will hold workshops, they want to participate. If we want them to support us in some way, they offered to do that unbidden, which was kind of nice. So I, I think it was, I've also met with a representative from WeWatch, just to talk to them about this force main that would go down Alamo Potado. And just for those who haven't been really following that as closely as others, you know, whether it's an effluent to a, some sort of a metering tank at the bottom by the bridge, and then a force main, or gravity fed to a metering tank, and then a force main, that force main going down Alamo Potado is the same, okay? It's still a pressurized pipe regardless of how you've collected things. So you really, in many ways, when you think about that, I need to separate the conversation about gravity fed or effluent because it doesn't matter. That's upstream from a metering tank that would be used to regulate and pressurize what goes down with the City of Solving. Also met with a representative, and I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher, I always get this organization's name wrong. I think it's the Santinaz Concerned Citizens Committee. I think that's the group. They're really focused right now on what's happening in the City of Solving with that new development, kind of by the, by the hospital. I did offer to both of those groups to come and speak to their boards if and when they're ready and answer questions that they might have. Many of them, I think it was brought up earlier this evening, you know, have been very focused on making sure that we don't cause growth down the Alamo Potado corridor. You know, everything we're seeing says a couple of really important things, right? One is force main will be sized to support our effluent and nothing else. And that there's no legal requirement to allow anybody to connect to it. So you have a pipe that's under pressure going down Alamo Potado, and nobody else connects to it. So that's kind of the, the short story version of it. I am working to set up with a meeting, a meeting with Dunn. You know, Director Palmer talked earlier about if we do a local solution, what would that look like? Work it, it's it. Of course, you may recall a little over a year ago, Dunn said, well, we've got some land. We might be open to a conversation. I want to just reconfirm with them, is that even a thing, right? They may say, no, okay, fine, that's fine. But we need to know if it's a thing or not, right? Much like the Los Olivos school, is that a thing or not? If it's not a thing, that's okay. We just need to know. I mentioned, when I put this together, my meeting with the City of Solving was next week because I put this together last week. It's now tomorrow. And I'll be talking to them about many of the things that we've been talking about tonight. Continue to do postings on Facebook and next door, just try and make sure people know what we're up to. The water sampling from November 20th, all of that is complete. The results are posted on the website. I post them all as soon as I get the reports from these organizations. So nobody has to wait for one of these meetings to see what they found. Due to some legal changes that have came effective as of January 1st, I'm moving all of our videos to YouTube. The toolset that we use from, I want to say Streamline, Streamline, whatever the website, those companies aren't sufficient to meet the new legal requirements. YouTube has some functionality that allows that to happen on. I was supporting the District Engineer Pike with his efforts to get the grant. You just heard. It sounds like those funds have come forward. So that's all I'll get to. The only other thing I wanted to share real quick was, because we haven't really kind of talked about this in a while, jump way down here. This is in the packet on page, whatever page that is. It's like it's all the way down to like page 60. Where'd it go? Not showing. Hold on. Sorry. Just a second. Well, here we go. This one, I'm sorry. There we go. So what this is showing is we have a little over $400,000 in our bank account as of this moment. We do have quite a few, all those bills that you guys approved earlier are not going to get paid. StanTech's bill still needs to be paid. Luckily, we have another $75,000 coming in from a revenue perspective. The big jump, for those who don't follow this, you know, that's, that's property tax payments being made by community members, which results in our, our assessment being put into our banking account. So we're in a position to be able to do at least a good chunk of the work, you know, yet costly EIR could presumably be paid for out of that. I'm going to reconfirm some costs related to going from a 30% design to like a 60, 80% design. The numbers we had heard before, we couldn't pay for both an EIR and that more detailed engineering and operations out of this money. So I want to understand exactly where we're at from a, from a bill's perspective, a future bill's perspective. So I just bring this up. There are a couple of other reports in, in the packet that you're really interested in seeing what our, our regular status, budget status report looks like and so on. And then I would just close with, we use the county's financial system. It's called FIN. We've been using it for quite some time now. More than once, the county has said, we're going to shift to a new system called Workday. I was on the call for an hour this morning that they said the new bill live date is August 1st. They've got some ground cover between now and August 1st. But, you know, they're, they're, they're in a situation where they're, they're going to have to, it's kind of like what we've been talking about. They're going to have to make some decisions to move forward. At some point, they're going to have to just do it. Will they make August 1st or not? I'm not going to opine on that. Our role is, at this point, is pretty limited. And I say that because the functionality we use is very generic, right? The reports that I pull are standard reports that they will port over to the new system. We set up vendors in their system and we pay bills. That's about it. So at this point, it will impact this, mostly myself, District Engineer Pike, and Mary who pays our bills from MS. I've got some things I've got to do. So you'll see a little bit of time in my notes to you that show me working on that. I'm going to wait. I've spoken to District Engineer Pike about this before. We're going to wait effectively till the last minute to do any training because we went through a bunch of training almost two years ago that was for not. And so I'm going to wait until they're really certain they're going live. Again, we only use a very, very, very small subset of functions and it's probably, you know, two or three hours worth of training this time around. So I'm just going to push it out as long as I can. Any questions?
I just have one comment on the, your characterization of the regional board's desire to help.
Yeah.
Would they attend or go on record for LAFCO?
Can I ask?
Yeah. Because.
They'll be there. They were there.
Well, that would be helpful for them to be vocal, especially if.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, I just, I mean, this is a little bit out there, but on the Workday transition, as you're looking at that, can you ascertain whether or not that's going to be suitable for us as we go forward? I'm thinking as we, at some point, we hopefully have a shovel in the ground and we start doing construction. And so management evolves that project and the costs and make sure we're properly categorizing everything. Is this system suitable for that? And then the next step would be, I mean, again, this is way down the road, but just in thinking about it, does this have the ability, if we end up as a district invoicing property owners on some regular basis for services, does this have the ability to do that? Anyway, yeah, just what?
County experience from the county north of us in San Luis. The short answer to all those is yes, it could do this, what we wanted to do. They often, don't call them special districts. They have, you know, service areas and all sorts of things like that. They basically do the same thing as part of the county. I think the bigger question is, is it too much system for us, right? That might be the question you're ultimately asking. Do we want a system that big? Yes, it'll do what we want. Or is there a smaller, more appropriate system?
Well, and that was my second question was going to be, what is there, is the cost to us going to increase and?
It's going to change. Does it increase? I don't know. It's, it's going to be different.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
That's the end of my report.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda, Director Comments. Just go down the line. Anybody?
None.
None? All right. I'll finish it out. Thank you. All right. Last item on the agenda is a adjournment. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move the adjourn.
At?
Whatever time it is.
8:07.
8:07.
All right. First by Director Nelson. And, okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.
Thank you, board.
Thank you all very much for coming online as well. Much appreciated. The participation, the feedback is, is very helpful. So.
Byron, nice to see you.
Yes, thank you very much.